And now our fine arts director, Ms. Rose Martha.
Thank you. As you know, you're in for a terrific concert this evening. You're going to get to hear all of your children participating in our choral ensembles. And as I like to say, all of the selections, or most of our selections, I should say, will absolutely meet our New York State and National Standards for Music Education. Song selections will be diverse. You will hear challenging rhythmic and melodic passages, varying time signatures, and strong dynamics. And now it is my pleasure to bring to you our judges, chorus directed by Mr. Ed Kaczynski.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to start this evening and hope you're having a wonderful evening of musical performance and variety with a little bit of jazz. This piece, the first piece, is "The Look of Love", and it was sung by many people in 1960. Now I'm dating myself, but I do remember this song. Raise your hand in the audience if you remember "The Look of Love". Come on, folks. Come on, here we go, here we go. Well, it was most popular from the movie Casino Royale, a James Bond film. Here we go, "The Look of Love".
The look of love. The look of love is in your eyes. A love that's far can't be stopped.
The look of love is saying so much more than just words could ever say.
And what my heart has learned, well, it takes my breath away. I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you, you've got the love.
The love is on your face. It's a love that's hard can't erase, erase in my mind tonight.
Let this be just the start of so many nights like this. Let's take a lover's vow and seal it with a kiss.
I can hardly wait to hold you, feel my arms around you. How long I have waited, waited just to love you. Now that I have found you. Don't ever go, I love you so. Don't ever go, I love you so.
You've got the love. All the love.
You guys are good, aren't they? The next piece we're going to perform, and the final piece, is another Latin type of piece. In jazz, the Latin role was predominant in the 1960s between bossa novas and sambas. And this piece, "Brazil", in fact, is a very famous song in Brazil. And it's a samba type of piece, and it features a number of solists. But before I do that, I just want to take a couple of minutes because this will be our last number for the evening. And I want to acknowledge a few students who sadly will be departing from our group. And these are students who are, in fact, seniors going off to college and doing various things. Some of them, in fact, will continue their musical path, and others will foresee and anticipate other dynamic opportunities for themselves. But I do want to acknowledge first and foremost, and when these people, when I call your names, if you could just please come out for a moment, the bass player who we have, this gentleman right here, Mr. Frederick Planes. We'll be able to put this somewhere, but I'd just say, we have Planes, senior member of the Farmingdale High School Jazz Chorus, and he's the bass player, recognizing an outstanding member of this vocal ensemble, demonstrating leadership and dedication for the last year in this group. So give him one more time a round of applause. Now going to a vocalist, this young lady, although she hasn't been with this particular group for that long, she's really been indispensable. And you will hear her not only today in this group, but also in my women's chorus. And she's also a mainstay, a big, big part of the success of that group as well. And her name is Brandi Lynn Garmar Larson. Next, we do have two more individuals. Both of these individuals have been in the group for a rather long time. They've been a staple of the group, and they've helped maintain this group. Technically, this group is a club. We actually meet after school once a week. And sometimes when on vacation, we kind of double up or make plenty of rehearsals to make it happen throughout this course of the year. So we can learn jazz, we can learn scat singing, blues, things of that nature, but also the dynamics that are necessary to make this music work. And without these two individuals, who have been really my right and left hand, we wouldn't have the stability that we have. So first and foremost, I'd like to grab the poster and the frame and give this to Ms. Jane Matzell. And last, but certainly not least, is an individual, a young gentleman, a wonderful human being, always a smile on his face, always a very positive person. And he's involved in so many of the groups that you will witness tonight, but he's a major part of this group, and that's Mr. Vitaly Yenzer. Please, though, without further ado, Brazil.
Wait, hold on, hold on. Where do you go on? Sorry, hi. So, so as you can see, Vocal Jazz is a really small group. There's not a lot of us. And it definitely has been a crazy ride, especially I know for me and Vitaly. Been here for three years. I can't believe it. We're graduating. And seriously, we couldn't do what we do without Mr. Kay. And we just really want to say thank you. So we just got him a little something just to show our appreciation. So thank you for everything that you've done for us.
Thank you. And now, without further ado, I've said that a couple of times, Brazil.
Da da da, da 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 da, da da da, da 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 da. Da da da, da 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 da, da da da. Till our hearts were entertaining to you. We spent together beneath the moon. And softly murmured someday soon. Together, da da, to you. Tomorrow was a happy day. The more you found me miles away. And still a million things to say. There are a million things. But I can say. Oh, yeah. There's a heart of... There is one thing I'm certain of, return. I will. Da da da, da 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 da, da da da, da 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 da. Da da da, da 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 da, da da da, da da da. Till our hearts were entertaining to you. We spent together beneath the moon. And told each other someday soon. Someday, one day. Tomorrow was another day. The more you found me miles away. There's still a million things to say. A million things to say. Now, when twilight turns the sky above. We're calling thrills of fire. There are just one thing I'm certain of. Return, one day. I will, I will. Da da da, da 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 da, da da da, da 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 da. Da da da, da 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 da.
And now it is my pleasure to bring to you our wonderful women's choir, again directed by Mr. Ed Kaczynski. Enjoy.
Thank you. Once again, I just, I'll be brief, but just a couple of moments here. The first piece we're going to play or perform for you is called "Child with the Starry Crayon". It's fairly interesting because the lyrics were actually written by a fifth grader and it is in a school in Toronto. And it inspired his music teacher to set it to music. And it just, it was actually a piece that I was not aware of, but recommended to me by my friend, Ms. Mishby. And it's just a lovely piece. So please enjoy "Child with the Starry Crayon".
The sun slowly sets. The sun slowly sets. Goes down, goes down for the night.
All the little children are sleeping. All the little children are sleeping. All except for the children. Makes the story pray.
As the sun sets, he slowly, slowly. Yawns, stretches and gets out of bed. He puts up to sit on the moon. He puts up to sit on the moon. He puts up to sit on the moon. To draw on a fresh piece of black paper. He doodles on the... All night.
Summer people watching. Summer people watching. As he draws the stars. The sun slowly sets.
Thank you. Something I'd like to also share with you, that is one of the pieces that we'll be performing is coming Wednesday at Hester University for the Miss Maloja Organization Festival. And so wish us luck. The next piece we're going to sing is an a cappella piece called "You Are the New Day", and of course, very, very positively, and I'll send you to it.
You are the new day. You are the new day. I will love you more than me and more than yesterday. If you can but prove to me, you are the new day. Send the sun in time for dawn. Let the birds all hail the morning. Love of life will urge me safe. You are the new day. When our babies are at night. Knowing we must bear. A bird that lives not right, say yesterday. Thus that we as humans small, could slow worlds and end it all. Lie around me where they fall. Before the new day. One more day when time is running out for everyone. Like a breath thy new would come, I'd reach for a new day. Hope is my philosophy. Just needs days in which to be. Love of life is hope for me. Born on a new day. You are the new day.
Thank you. Looks are beautiful and so sweet and simple, but very hard. For Miss Ma on Wednesday called "Music Down in My Soul". Enjoy.
I hear music in the air. I can feel it in the air. There must be a God somewhere. Over my head. I hear music in the air. Over my head. I hear music in the air. Over my head. I hear music in the air. There must be a God somewhere.
Over my head. I hear singing in the air. Over my head. I hear singing in the air. Over my head. I hear singing in the air. There must be a God. There must be a God. There must be a God somewhere. I've got this music down in my soul. And it fills my heart with the joy of the Lord. I've got this music down in my soul. And it fills my heart with the joy of the Lord. I've got a joy everlasting. I've got a peace everlasting. I've got a love everlasting. I've got a joy everlasting. Love in my heart. Yes, I've got peace in my soul. Yes, I've got joy in my heart. Joy today. I've got this music down in my soul. And it fills my heart with the joy of the Lord. I've got this music down in my soul. And it fills my heart with the joy of the Lord. I've got a joy everlasting. I've got a peace everlasting. I've got a love everlasting. I've got a joy everlasting. Love in my heart. Yes, I've got peace in my soul. Yes, I've got joy in my heart. Joy today. Do you love the Lord? I love the Lord. Do you love the Lord? I love the Lord. Do you love the Lord? I love the Lord. Do you love the Lord? I love the Lord. Do you love the Lord? I love the Lord. Do you love the Lord? I love the Lord. I've got a joy everlasting. I've got a joy everlasting. I've got a peace everlasting. I've got a peace everlasting. I've got a love everlasting. Music down in my soul. And it fills my heart with the joy of the Lord. I've got this music down in my soul. And it fills my heart with the joy of the Lord. I've got a joy everlasting. I've got a peace everlasting. I've got a love everlasting. I've got a joy everlasting. Love in my heart. Yes, I've got peace in my soul. Yes, I've got joy in my heart. I've got joy. I've got peace. I've got love in my soul.
If you don't have anything down in your soul, at this point, I don't know what to tell you. Before we announce the la- I couldn't resist. Before we announce the last piece, I'd like to make a few acknowledgements once again for three lovely young ladies who have been a mainstay and a big, big part of the success of this wonderful women's group. And I love all of these ladies. These girls have just gone out of their way every time I need them help. What can I do? You have an idea? They often come up with something great. So I'd like to acknowledge them right now. In no particular order, but first and foremost, I would like to announce the outstanding contributions, outstanding service to the women's chorus for 2019, Leanne Bashir. So I'm a newbie at this, and what I should have done is, I should have told one of my girls to help out and give a carnation after I give the award, and I bombed it. So right now, we're waiting for a moment until we get it. And here we go. One more time, Leanne Bashir. They have a plan, thank God. Alright, so. Let me find out who she's going to give the carnation. That would be rather embarrassing if I gave the wrong name and then she's like, wait a second, the wrong name. Alright, but this, this award goes to, once again, my right-hand lady.
Check.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Board of Education. Pursuant to Executive Order 202.1 and subsequent orders closing district schools issued by the Honorable Andrew M. Cuomo, Governor of the State of New York, signed March 12, 2020, and due to the concerns of the Board of Education for the health and safety of the community emanating from the current COVID-19 pandemic, there will be no in-person public access to the aforementioned board meeting, and instead, the meeting will be livestreamed and recorded. Access to livestream can be had by accessing the school's district's website, for a link that'll bring you to a YouTube site, and the recording of the meeting can be accessed on www.farmingdellschools.org. In addition, the public participation portion of the meeting shall be suspended by Board resolution. Mrs. D'Amico, may I have a motion to suspend public participation?
I make a motion that pursuant to the aforementioned executive orders, the Board is suspending the public participation portion of the meeting, and therefore, accordingly, there will be no public participation in this board meeting.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Please note that the Board of Education is interested in encouraging members of the public to share their ideas, comments, and questions. You may send your feedback and questions to us through our email account, boe@farmingdellschools.org. A member of the district's administrative team will respond to you, and then questions will be publicly addressed at next week's board meeting. Thank you for your anticipated courtesy and cooperation. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Mr. Defendini, can we have your monthly update, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. Yeah, I'd like to start off with a bit of happy news. On tonight's agenda, the Board of Education will note the retirement of Dr. Joan Ripley, valued member of our administrative team for many, many years. Some of you may have known Dr. Ripley in her early years as a teacher over here at Howitt Building, where she taught some of our gifted and talented students. The early years where she adopted programs like HyperStudio, the precursor, to Microsoft PowerPoint and Google Slides, always on the cutting edge, that Dr. Ripley, and her work here since, areas like RTI, reading and math workshops, understanding by design, course offerings at the high school, and I can go on and on. The bottom line is, Dr. Ripley is a really good person. She's been a good, good, good professional colleague, a good friend over the years, and I wish her absolutely all well. She's got a lot more time with us. This is, this is not a soon-to-say goodbye. Dr. Ripley has graciously, again, been agreeable to staying on as we begin the transition process over the course of the next many months. But again, I just wanted to recognize Dr. Ripley as, this month, it is, the motion is on the agenda, her letter is on the agenda for the Board's consideration. Congratulations, Joan, and for this moment, you have a lot more to do for us. We're not there yet. So, but congratulations on this at this point.
Thank you.
Joan, thank you for all your service and everything you've done for the district, and we'll continue to do for the next couple of months.
Great. So, so, some more good news, I guess, that I have to share with the Board of Education again. We submit to the community on a nightly basis the number of cases that we're seeing around the district. And we have, obviously, as people have been able to note, looking at that nightly reporting, we are in a much better place than where we were six weeks ago. The number of cases has dropped drastically, and it really has given us the confidence to start opening more and more opportunities for our students, which is incredibly refreshing and heartwarming. I had a chance to be a part of the High School Musical, to watch the High School Musical not that long ago, and it was absolutely incredible to watch our students up on stage performing. It was incredible to watch the audience's response, the simplicity of the way that the kids were cheering after they had finished their last number. The finale was, was absolutely an emotional moment, to watch our kids be able to celebrate in that kind of a way after doing something really special. You know, you're seeing more and more come online, and you'll continue to see more and more coming online as the school year persists. As an example, Farmingdale High School seniors started the transition back to full daily live instruction this past Monday. By the end of this week, we will have a significant number of students back, and thanks to the work of the high school administrative team, the teachers, the support staff members over there, we'll have everybody back, you know, or those back that requested to be back by the end of next week. So, again, there is a bit of a transition period getting everybody through, so another one of the projects that we're very proud of, and again, special thanks also goes to Joan on that one as well, who's been a part of that team in getting that work done. We've also had a, what I believe to be a successful winter sports season, pretty exciting that we got through almost the entirety of that winter sports season without really any major events. We are testing our students here in Farmingdale for those people that might have some questions with regard to that. Again, a state memo was submitted, you know, early on in this process, basically giving it over to the local Department of Health to make a decision. As an example, Suffolk County made a decision that universally all school districts in Suffolk would be testing. In Nassau County, that decision was laid at the feet of the local school districts. Along with a lot of other districts across Nassau County, we are electing to test all of our student athletes and all of our coaches. We believe it to be in the safest and best interest of our, of our players, and not only our own players and our coaches, but other teams as well. You know, for those of you that were obviously paying attention to the one sport that did have a, a lost end of the season, it was another player from another team that wound up doing that, right? So, we're trying to do our part in doing the right thing over here, taking care of our kids, taking care of our coaches, safety first, by doing the right thing. I'm also excited to have started spring sports this past Monday. So, two days ago, we started our, I'm sorry, our fall sports season started this past Monday, and our spring sports season is set to begin in the middle of April. We're also in the process right now of dotting the i's and crossing the t's to get our middle school sports fall season fully operational as well. So, later this month, that'll come online, you know, for our student athletes here at the middle school. So, a lot of work has been going on around the district, getting all of these things online. It's exciting, and it's also indicative of what is to come. Again, because we're going to continue to try to loosen things up where we can, as long as we can do so in a safe manner. Budget update, just real quick, again, our budget deliberation process starts very soon. Mr. Motisi's been working diligently with his staff and with the entire administrative staff, putting together next year's budget. I'm certainly not going to take any thunder away from Mr. Motisi and his announcement about the budget for next year, but if I could talk in just a very brief generality, some of the more concerning thoughts that we had about the budget do not, at this point in time, look like they're going to be coming to fruition. So, it looks like we're going to, for the upcoming school year, manage programs and services, you know, for our students, making some thoughtful decisions where we need to, but maintaining a lot of what it is that makes Farmingdale Farmingdale, right? Those things that define us, we thought were essential, that those things are not taken from our students for next year. And again, thanks to the support of the Board of Education, we're going to be able to do that for the upcoming school year while still being mindful of what's going on, because we're reminded all the time, especially by so many members of the Board of Education, our fiscal responsibility to the community under these difficult times. So, the budget, I believe, does both, manages that tax levy component and also maintains programs and essential services for our students. Last item, complexity, that's going to be, we continue to get drips and drabs of information about state exams, 3-3-8 exams, and regents exams. We did receive a memo from the United States Department of Education indicating that the waiver that was put in place by the state was denied. State was looking for universal, universal waiver for all high-stakes tests, 3-3-8 exams, and all regents exams. That waiver was not granted, but there are caveats all over the place as far as how this thing is going to play out for our students. It appears that the 3-3-8 exam is going to happen, but there is a possibility that that exam date could be delayed to as late as the fall. We have to pay attention to, you know, further guidance from the state to determine when that might happen. We've also found out from the state that all of the, what I would, I guess, refer to as non-federally linked regents exams will be canceled for this year. So, non-federally required, and there are certain algebra, ELA, and others are required per federal standards. Those examinations, again, have to happen because the federal government, again, denied the waiver at the state level. But all of the other exams that typically would have been part of our regents week in June will be canceled for this year, and it does look like August regents is also will be canceled as well. That seems to be the most recent guidance that we've received from the state. Again, it keeps coming in, you know, information, and we will provide a very detailed update to the community once we have really this whole thing very well understood, once we get all the guidance from the state. We will lay something out very clearly to the community so that you know exactly what it is to expect with regard to, you know, how this is going to play out for our students for the upcoming, the upcoming season. So, that's it for me, Mr. Goldberg.
Thank you, Paul. As for the testing, as a parent of a student athlete and as a board member, I am thrilled that we are testing our, our athletes, and I believe that is the, the best way to go forward. I'm very disappointed in other districts not testing as they are exposing our children. So, that is a, that is a problem.
Yeah, and, and, and I'm also proud of the fact that the athletics department has done a really great job learning from, you know, some early challenges that we had from a testing standpoint. The first few weeks were definitely rocky, admittedly. We had our struggles in the first few weeks, but man, this past week, 250 kids came through, and we absolutely nailed it. Very smooth, very seamless results were provided, very timely. We figured some stuff out. The company that we worked with has figured some stuff out, and we're in a really good place right now, you know, to continue this process in as seamless a way as possible. So, there's as least amount of frustration as possible on the parent's side.
And I, and I agree with, my daughter literally left my house at, at one time, and she was back with 15 minutes. I said, "You tested already?" They said, "Totally tested, done." So, the timing was great, and kudos to the whole athletic staff. They're there, they're, they're working with the kids. When they had the insurance card issues or anything else, they're, they're, they're working with them and making sure everything went seamless.
Yep, they're, they're, they're a department that's certainly going to be taxed over the course of the coming weeks as schedules and reschedules and games, and this kid's got COVID, and, and it's going to be, it's going to be a wild ride, I'm sure, for them. But seeing what it is that they did from a testing standpoint as a, as a testament to their ability to learn and grow is, is, is amazing. So, thanks to them, and, you know, we're going to, we're going to do our best. Oh, one other piece, I'm sorry, while I'm here, is just the spectator policy. Just touch on that real quick. We are, again, agreeing to allow our parents, home field parents, two spectators per child to attend up to a maximum occupancy of the facility while still maintaining all social distancing protocols, mask wearing and the like. So, you're going to be getting some specific, parents are going to be getting some specific information about how that's going to play out for the upcoming fall and spring season. For most sports, it'll be easy enough. We'll, we'll, we'll figure that out. We have some, some things and systems and checks and balances that we have to put into place for sports like soccer, which have a lower turnout. There's going to have to be a pretty heavy lift again for our home football games because of the number of student athletes, the number of participants in those events. If you actually do the count, we have, you know, 318 marching band students, you know, the, the kick line, our, our dailorets, our cheer program, our flag bearers, our football team. You're talking about hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of kids, five, 600 kids in total. So, we're going to figure that out, and we'll put out some information about how parents can, can attend those events, as well as even in some instances, some indoor events as well. And that's, again, all part of our reopening plan, that we're trying to do our best to get ourselves, you know, back to an operational, an operational position where, where we can offer opportunities for kids, but also get parents reconnected to the schools, because that's, that's important as well.
Mr. Defendini, could I just interject also for the Board's knowledge and the community that we still have the newly instituted camera system that will stream the games online, both indoor and outdoor games, that is available free through the, through the district? So, you can watch those games if there is an ability to attend. You can watch the games on your local device at any point in time.
And Mr. Zakian, the, the camera system has been phenomenal so far. You know, myself and other board members have watched events, and it's, it's been great, and the clarity and everything, it really has been a great way to watch it.
Yeah, we've been, we've been thrilled with the results. We're looking forward to, you know, you seeing the outside. We've already tested the outside facility in the stadium, and it's up and operating. We're just waiting for the first games to start to, to see that outdoor stadium in action as well.
Right.
And, and I'm, I'm sure that if the numbers change and we have to change in a minute, that we're going to be able to do that for the safety of everybody.
No doubt, no doubt. This is all with the understanding, Kath, that we're going to continue to be operating under the current circumstances. If those circumstances change, then we're going to have to, because the most important thing that we do is the academic work. So, you know, all the other things are great, and they make school great, and I'm not denying the, the ability for us to get those off without a hitch. But if, if we need to pivot, and we need to move and change, and we'll, we'll do that to make sure that we maintain the integrity of the academic environment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Defendini. I just want to thank the entire administration, athletics, and, you know, everybody in this district for their efforts this year to get things going, because it's been a stop and start. It's been changing of guidelines overnight, changing of guidelines within the hour sometimes. So, it, it's just, it's been a colossal effort, and you and your team have just done an amazing job to keep things going. Okay, I call for a motion to approve the minutes of the February meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 3, 2021, regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Mrs. Rogers, have we received any correspondence this month?
Yes, the Board received a parent letter which was thanking all of you, board members, as well as administration for the support that is clearly evident that's been given to students during the pandemic, and the communication effort was particularly noted. And then, we did receive a parent letter regarding a special education issue, and finally, a parent letter regarding middle school students and their ability to participate in high school athletics. All of the letters were responded to by the administrative team, and I believe also the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of items 1, A through I, 2, A through C, and 3, A through D, be approved as a whole with action recorded separately.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Goldberg, can we have board committee reports?
Yeah, I didn't see that on the, I, I.
That's okay, that's okay.
I was going to put that in now because I didn't see that on the.
Certainly.
Not a foul. Does any board members have any committee reports? And we, we know it's a yes, so it's just rhetorical question, so let's, who would like to go first?
Okay.
I'll go first.
I'll follow.
All right. Since we last saw everybody on February 3, on February 16, at the Library Committee, the Public Library Committee, just two major points, they have finally, I guess they've agreed that they're, but they're going to have a 0% budget increase for, to be voted upon. I don't know if you have to vote up on that, but yeah, it's going to be a 0% budget increase. And also, they are going back to regular hours on April 1. The Public Library will be going back to regular hours on April 1, but there will not be any Sunday hours. Now, I know on the 25th of February, a bunch of us were at the high school PTA meeting. You know, that, I feel like that's the chunkiest meeting. There's so much information to, to, to gather there. I'm just going to bring up three points. If anybody else wants to bring up other points from the high school PTA, please do so. Membership is at 334. Their goal is for, is 400, so if you have not joined the high school PTA, please do so. They also shared with us the new Wellness Committee website, which is absolutely awesome. It's got so many great resources on it. If you haven't, if you haven't gone on our webpage and checked out, and checked the, the Wellness Committee website, please do so. It's amazing, the amount of stuff on it. It's amazing, the amount of stuff on it, wide variety of information. Awesome. And I think the, my third bullet was, you know, Ms. Martinez, her food drive and how they raised 400 pounds of food for Island Harvest. I thought that was certainly a highlight and great job by her and our students in the high school. Does anybody else want to add to the high school PTA meeting? Okay. No? Okay. And then on February 9th, I was at the Republic Airport Committee. Ironically, their flights or their, I guess their busyness, they're not, their flights have been down, so they haven't been as busy, but ironically, complaints have gone up. Well, why? Because, you know, people, well, why is it not busy? Because people aren't flying as much right now. And why are the complaints up? Because more people are at home. So I found that to be unusual. They've also been dealing with, they've had 13 cases of COVID within the airport. They've done a good job controlling it and quarantining afterwards and whatnot, and deep cleaning the airport. If you follow in the media, there was a crash. Unfortunately, they had a small plane crash at the airport. It was weather related, a plane slid off the runway. If you've seen cameras around, it's because they've been filming the show Bull on, in Hangar 7. So look for the, if you're a fan of that show, look for that. And lastly, within the airport, the FAA is currently looking at their, at a environmental assessment that was done for the five parcels on the airport grounds. Okay? Thank you.
Anybody else? Before I go, I, I have quite a few, but you might want to hit on them first, no? We're good?
All you, Kathy.
Okay, involves many, many, many people, these committees. So, the safety meet, this is off since February 3rd meeting. So the safety committee met and has been amending the district-wide safety plan, which is on the agenda tonight for action. A lot of the amendments were due to COVID-19 requirements. The committee put a lot of that together according to, you know, the, the information that came down from the state. So that's going to be, like I said, on for action tonight. The wellness committee, as Mario had mentioned from the high school meeting, unbelievable. Dr. Ripley put the, the committee together, worked on the website, very few of us are on it. I know Arlene is on it as well, but it was really interesting to, to be a part of that and see the benefits that changed our whole website, wellness. Dr. Ripley, thank you so much for putting that together, and the, the information that's on there is, is, there's something for everybody. The PTA is getting the word out there too about the wellness information. If there's any questions, Dr. Ripley would probably be the first one to go to, and just peruse the website and see. I found it very interesting as well. Arlene, anything with that? No? We're good?
Yeah, again, like you said, I think the most impressive thing for me was the San Diego Zoo. Like, I still enjoy to go on that. I love seeing the animals. We can't get to a zoo, so I sit, and I will use that during the course of my day at my job, and it just calms me to watch the animals. So if anybody out there needs a minute of calmness, check out the animals, there's an aquarium. I mean, it really is awesome, so enjoy it.
Thank you. The other, I'll, I'll pick up Farmingdale Youth Council. Farmingdale Youth Council's two things that I want to throw out there right now. It's the, and probably the last time the board mentioned it, because the due date for scholarship paperwork is the 15th of March. Two, youth council scholarships, community service bound seniors at, in our district, high school seniors, and $1,000, two different scholarships. The information's on the youth council website and on our high school website under guidance. Can't miss that, so get your, your kids to put in those application papers. Like I said, March 15th is the due date. The winter swim program just completed, or will be completing their first session. It's held on Saturdays from, it depends on the session, I think it starts at 10:00 and it ends at 12:00 for three different sessions. That is, is concluding, and session two right now is on the Farmingdale Youth Council website for registration. There's a few spots left. Their, the program is up and running, and they're doing a great job. Anything else? Any other organizations in the Farmingdale Youth Council are waiting for clearance from the school district and such to run their programs? The only other program that's running is aquatics because of the pool. Anything else with that? I think Anthony, do you have anything to add to that?
Just that we haven't made a decision yet on the summer program yet, so a lot of people started asking questions, and we'll let them know as we know what's happening with the building and when the board and Tim McBride makes that decision in the future.
Tim McBride did say to me that he's going to do everything in his power to run some type of program, so you can probably guarantee that there's going to be some program from Tim McBride. If he has to rent the whole big field somewhere, I'm sure he would do it, but as soon as we have the information to that, yes, we will get it out there.
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
I'm meeting with Tim, actually, later this week, so we'll, we'll, we're going to work with him to try to find a way to support the youth council any way that we can, so.
Thank you, Paul.
I think it definitely would, yeah. So he has some great ideas, and I'm sure we'll have a nice program up and running in a safe environment. Also, the Farmingdale Chamber of Commerce, Suzanne and I are on the board of directors there, and they're running, they're doing a lot of virtual networking, trying to even virtually ask people who are participating in the networking virtually to order from restaurants, establishments in our town to use that, sit, virtually talk about things. They had one at Lethology, and you could order beer, deliver it to your home, and they give you a tour of Lethology. So we're, they're finding creative ways to help our merchants in our community. They are also have a scholarship that they're trying to run for our high school seniors. Every year, the Farmingdale Chamber of Commerce gives three, two or three scholarships for our seniors. Because of the pandemic, we were not able to run a lot of our scholarship, I mean, our fundraising programs, one of them being comedy night. And they're asking for anyone who wants to donate towards a scholarship so that we can give our seniors some scholarships this year. It would be much appreciated. So it's on the Farmingdale Chamber website. If you'd like to donate, we would definitely appreciate that. The wellness, we talked about safety policy. On our agenda tonight for items of action is also a policy and regulation on student records. Thank you, Mr. Zakian, for having that committee. That's a great committee to be on as well. A lot of information there. There is also two policies, draft policies for discussion tonight, which is on attendance, attendance, excuse me, and gender neutral bathrooms. So that's in the later portion of our meeting tonight. Also, we have a very big and, and very busy committee this past couple months, led by Dr. Brennan and Mike Mottisi. Suzanne and I are on the Legislative Action Committee. Boy, have we been busy. We have met, and since our last meeting with Assemblyman Steve Stern, Anthony Durso, and Kimberly Jean-Pierre. And it's a pleasure to meet with our representatives. In addition to the committee, which consists of many people right here in Farmingdale, and we have our students joining us, our high school students, several of them, and it's really great to hear them speak and our representatives listen to what our students have to say, and what they're going through, what they do in our district, what courses they have. So that's really a fun thing to see. We are on Thursday having a sort of like a town hall type, type meeting where all our representatives, I think there's seven of them, that are joining us in a virtual meeting. And our students are going to be on there asking questions. We're going to have just the verbatim, hey, what do you want to talk about? This is my concern, this is your concern. So it should be a very interesting, fun event. Suzanne and I will be there along with other, uh, community members and committee members, and can't wait for that. With the legislative action, the PTA, New York State, had a legislative summit, and I bring this up because it was last weekend, and the summit was to discuss and talk about different items the PTA in particular has concerns about with our representatives. So this is New York State. However, Long Island had a contingency who usually goes up to Albany, but because of COVID, we're doing it virtually. So the legislative summit talked about many different areas, which a lot of it is concerns that our school district has as well. One of them was mental health. The second one was digital and technology equity. The third one was opposition to legalization of recreational marijuana. And the, the other one was school aid and state budget issues. So today, after Legislative Action Summit last week, our, the committee that I was on with the PTA, New York State, mostly Long Island people with our representatives, we discussed a lot of these issues. We, we met with Senator Brooks' office, and they were very receptive of our concerns through the PTA, and tie that into school district, there's a lot of them. So a lot of concerns that the school district has as well. So put that together, we have many voices. So we'll give you updates on that when things occur. Looking forward really to our meeting on Thursday with all our representatives, with the students. And I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mario. Thank you, Kathy. Anybody else this evening? Okay. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the revised draft 2021-2022 school calendar?
I make a motion, sorry, I make a motion to adopt the 2021-2022 revised school district calendar in accordance with Board Policy 4110.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Zakian, can you keep weighing?
Sure. Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Goldberg. The board approved the 2021-2022 calendar in February's meeting. The calendar was approved with Friday, February 4th as a superintendent's conference day, and a regular workday on Thursday, April 14th, which is Holy Thursday, and the day prior to the start of spring break. It came to my attention when we released the calendar through two units, our cafeteria and teachers, aides, and school monitors, that their contract calls for Holy Thursday being a paid holiday off. Therefore, a slight adjustment to the calendar is presented to the board to accommodate the contractual obligations of the district. It is recommended to the board that we move the February 4th Superintendent's Conference Day and place it onto Thursday, April 14th, 2022. This adjustment will not impact the general calendar and meets all other state and local requirements for school attendance and days. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that the board may have at this time.
No questions, just want to thank you for your work on this calendar. This calendar gets a little bit trickier every year.
Thank you, and I apologize for, for coming back on this, but we've made note to that, and it will not happen again. So thank you for your understanding.
There's no apology, that's very, it's a very difficult process, and we appreciate your, all your efforts to get this done.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Zakian, we have an updated policy and regulation to review tonight?
Yeah, there are two policies for discussion tonight. As always, both policies have been vetted by our consultants at Gersio and Gersio, as well as the policy committee. This particular policy has also been reviewed and vetted by Mike Hungerford, who is the district's attendance officer. Policy 5100, attendance currently resides in our policy book. This mandated policy revision came to us from the New York State School Board Association in, in order to change attendance incentives. This recommendation is based on recent joint guidance by the State Education Department and the State Department of Health. Basically, the policy guidance recommends that school discourage the use of perfect attendance awards and incentives, which have the effect of students attending school possibly when ill. This can spread narrowly, sickness like the traditional Golden Flu, but in today's day and age, the potent novel coronavirus, COVID-19 spread. So instead of rewarding perfect attendance, the School Board Association suggests qualifying perfect attendance to exclude absence due to illness, and making such recognition weekly instead of monthly to reduce the pressure to attend school when you were actually sick, and limiting such rewards at the elementary level. Alternately, districts can abolish the use of recognizing perfect attendance altogether. In general, a comprehensive policy on student attendance is required by Commissioner's Regulation, the section's 104.1. This policy addresses those requirements, as well as the consideration for educational neglect and homeless students. I'm prepared to answer any questions that the board may have at this time.
Any questions from the board?
No, I just found that it was interesting to see the different languages now that, because of the items that are with virtual and computer and everything else, the, the, just the language that had to be changed on a lot of these policies.
Yep, it's, it's, thank you for that, Ms. Lively. It definitely is a sign of the times that we're going through, some unprecedented times, and we're, you know, moving forward with the state and the Department of Health and the School Boards Association and their recommendations. So if there are no additional questions, this particular item will be put on to the April meeting for consent agenda. And there is one other policy that has come to us that is a mandated policy. This is number 0101. It is a brand new policy, and it's titled gender neutral bathrooms. It's a new policy from the New York State School Boards Association due to changes in public health laws. And this policy mandates that all student designated single occupancy bathrooms located within a school, not including faculty and staff bathrooms, must be renamed as gender neutral bathrooms, and all signage must say so. Any restrooms that are currently designated as male and/or female only must be renamed with the general neutral designation. The district is currently reviewing all such bathrooms and taking appropriate actions as defined within this policy. I'm prepared to answer any questions that the board may have at this time regarding this policy.
So it's really just changing the signage?
Changing the signage and allowing, allowing both male and female entry into those bathrooms, and they're no longer delineated as male only or female only. And again, that's student-driven, single-use bathrooms, not faculty and staff bathrooms.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zakian.
Thank you, everybody.
That's going to come back, I guess, for next meeting also?
Yes, that too will be placed on the consent agenda for April.
Great, thank you. I call for a motion to enter into executive session.
I make a motion to enter into, into executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining in accordance with open meetings law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone.